We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call for the first public comment. This public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has three minutes to speak. There is also going to be ample time for public comment and public hearing for each agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak during this first initial public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first initial public comment. Agenda item number one, for possible action, approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2019, regular meeting.
I move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item, I'm actually going to move agenda item number six up. For possible action, excusal of Member Walton from meeting during tenure as interim fire chief pursuant to Section 3-1-6 of City Code. Susan Michael, do we have anything on that before we?
Yes, I'm just looking for the paperwork that I passed out to you. Thank you. What you've got before you is an email from Steve Walton, who, as you know, has recently been appointed, excuse me, as the city's interim fire chief, so he will not be able to serve on the commission, most likely for the next few months. He already did have a couple absences earlier this year, but it's been confirmed that the language in 3-1-6 of the city code does allow for the planning commission to excuse members. So he has officially made that request for the period noted on the email.
Perfect. Before we entertain a motion and move forward, I'd be remiss if I didn't take just a moment and thank Steve for his service. I know he's going to be coming back, and this is just a leave of absence request, but by the time he gets back, my tenure will be up. And I want to make it publicly known that it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Steve up here. And this appointment as the interim fire chief is just a testament to his esteemed career and the value that he's added in this community and on this commission as well. So we thank him for his service, and I personally thank him as well. So I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve that he, what should we say, dismiss?
Excuse.
Excuse him? Mm-hmm. And that he can come back on as a planning commissioner.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the ayes. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two on the agenda for possible action, Sheldon Cole and Nathia Devera for David McMillan, 1300 Gingerwood Street. Susan?
Thank you. I'm going to briefly summarize all four requests and then go into some detail and... Holly, could you pull up? Let's see. Does this advance going this way or?
I can turn it off.
Okay. I'll start by referencing the site plan. For those, I assume all of you have read your packets, and as the notice that went out to surrounding residents mentioned, the owner is planning a small addition of seven lots to Gingerwood Mobile Home Park, which currently consists of 270 mobile home sites. And as you can see from the plans, there is one lot proposed at the northwest corner of the property, at the end of Teakwood Street. And then there is an existing larger, almost one acre vacant parcel at the southeast corner of the property, where six new lots will be proposed with an extension of, I believe that's Hazelwood Street. Item A on the agenda is for the rezoning, and that's because, per the exhibit maps that you have in the file, that southeast vacant corner, half of it is still zoned as study. And when I realized this, I actually wondered if that was an old mapping error, and I went digging back through historical files. And the best I could determine was that when the tracks were originally sold in the '60s, they were a different configuration than they are now. And so that appears to be why that part of that piece was not rezoned when the rest of the property was zoned, apparently, to Mobile Home, or at the time, I believe it was called Trailer Zone. So that map change just carried over, and so now, in order for the owner to utilize that part of the property, that little triangle that is zoned S just needs to be rezoned to MP, Mobile Home Park, to match the rest of the property. And going back to referencing the site plan, for the variance request, as noted, there are variances requested with regard to lot area, lot width, wall, and landscape width along the park boundary. All of those are to be similar in nature to the existing park. Specifically, the park itself was originally developed back in the mid-1970s, and our code was different then. It allowed much smaller lots and narrower lots for mobile home parks at the time, which explains why Gingerwood and all the other mobile home parks in the city do not meet the current code standards of 6,000 square foot lots and 60-foot wide lots. There's also a requirement that there be a block boundary wall around the property, and that wasn't a requirement when the park was built. The only requirement initially was just a wall along the bounding street. And so for Gingerwood currently, and you've got photos in your packet, the block wall does exist along most of the frontage of Gingerwood Street, and the owner does intend to extend that wall along the remainder of that corner that's to be developed. However, he would prefer to keep the other property lines bounded by chain link fencing as already exists for basically most of the south and western boundaries of the existing park. So he basically wants to match like-for-like with that as well. Block wall along Gingerwood, chain link fence for the south and west boundaries of the addition. For the Lot A extension, there happens to already be a block wall at the rear and the side on that one, so it's not an issue there. And the fourth aspect of the variance is that the code currently requires a 10-foot landscaped area outside the wall of the development, next to the public street. And also, that was not a requirement back in the '70s when these mobile home parks were created. The existing area between the property line and the sidewalk varies between four and 10 feet, so it won't be the required 10-foot width per the current code, and so that's why a variance will be needed for that. The owner will be providing the required trees at every 30 feet along there, even though they don't exist along the rest of the frontage of Gingerwood. You know, he chose, you know, he easily could comply with that part of the code, so he's not asking for a variance from that requirement. And from the other exhibits in the file, you can actually see that the neighboring mobile home subdivision on the other side of Gingerwood, their property line actually abuts the sidewalk, so they've got no landscape boundary outside their park. Gingerwood does have, for most of its frontage, some landscape area along the street, it's just not 10 feet wide. It's about half that width, the four-and-a-half-feet-behind sidewalk, which is the normal distance behind a property line for subdivisions in that area. So the staff report analyzes all of that. It goes through the five criteria that the planning commission would need to find in favor of in order to approve the request. And there are two recommended conditions of approval if the planning commission chooses to approve the variance. And the first is that your request is based on these plans, and it doesn't entitle the owner to go beyond the scope of these plans if the variance is approved. And secondly, that the development of the Lot B area on the site plan, the one shown for six lots, obviously, is subject to the rezoning of the property per item A of this request, which of course has to go to city council in order for that to be formally approved. Part C of the request is for site plan approval, and you've got a copy of the current mobile home park zoning chapter in your file, and you could see that it spells out a number of criteria to be considered for the creation or expansion of a mobile home park. And so you've got a report, an analysis attached to the report, which goes through all the items in the code to determine, you know, what has been complied with versus which items are being asked for for variances. And basically, anything that didn't comply is subject to the variance request, so every other aspect of the code, you know, is determined to be in compliance. So if the planning commission determines that, in fact, you know, the plan meets the code requirements, Resolution Number 1178 can be approved to accomplish that. And there are conditions attached within that resolution. First, that the property, like the variance, would need to be developed in accordance with these plans. Secondly, that all activities in any future construction will need to comply with all of the city codes, as well as all the requirements of city departments and other governing agencies, including the state of Nevada's manufactured housing division. This draft site plan is for purposes of zoning approval, so it's not meant to be full construction drawings, so utilities are not shown on this version of the site plan. However, we have heard from staff that there will be a new fire hydrant required for that Lot B area where the new six lots are, because there's a requirement that there be a fire hydrant every so many hundred feet. I don't recall the exact requirement, but one will need to be provided. So the owner will be required to provide, you know, all the necessary utilities and paving of the street, et cetera, for the full development of all of these lots. The third condition in the resolution is, again, that the rezoning will need to be approved. And fourth, this site plan approval is subject to your approval of the variances listed in item B of the agenda. If you choose not to approve of variances, you won't be able to act on the site plan approval at this time. And then lastly, the last condition is that the allotments will need to be approved for the proposed mobile homes, and that that is part D of the request. Relatives to the growth control ordinance for these seven lots, the owner will need to obtain seven allotments for the growth control ordinance. And as the commission knows, your job is simply to verify that the proposed request conforms to zoning, which it will if you take action positively on items A, B, and C of the agenda. And so if those first three items are approved, then the planning commission's action is to forward this to the allotment committee, it will go for rating, and then on to the city council for approval in conjunction with the rezoning request. Because this is a mobile home park, it's not as if the owner is going to actually be putting his own mobile homes on the lots. What they provided for exhibits is just photos, you know, of, you know, typical mobile, newer mobile homes that would be provided, and a sample draft landscaping plan that the allotment committee would use to review. Per the site plan, what's noted on there is they have sort of theoretical lot layouts, basically, to show that a single or double-wide home will fit on all seven of the proposed lots. So there's theoretical site plans, which actually show smaller lots than what are proposed, and that's basically just to show that, well, if you have a typical mobile home size, and in order to meet all of the required setbacks, that theoretical plan is just showing you the minimum lot size needed, and all of the seven lots exceed those requirements. So with that, I'll attempt to answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. So that we can attack this in an effective way, I think we need to take this one item at a time, because clearly, we shouldn't be approving maps if we can't even approve the zoning. So let's take A for our mapping and rezoning there. Any questions for staff? We're going to limit it to just that item A. No questions for staff on the zoning there? Wonderful. At this time, we'll go ahead and bring the applicant up, if you'd like to come forward. We're going to have questions, if we have any, and it will be specific to the zoning here. We're going to get into the variances, we're going to get into the maps, and we're going to get into the setbacks and all of that stuff. So if you have anything to present as far as the zoning goes there, please state your name for the record.
Sergio Comparan.
I'm sorry, can you spell your last name?
C-O-M-P-A-R-A-N.
Thank you.
Do you have anything in regards to the zoning, the zoning as a whole, and we got the brief as to the maps and how it got to where we are today and just the zoning aspect?
I do not, actually. She did a fantastic job explaining pretty much all.
Wonderful. Any questions of the applicant regarding the zoning for rezoning? My little piece of land there. Fantastic. You can grab a seat, because we're going to move on to the next one real quick here. So we'll call ahead and call for a motion on the first one?
Excuse me, you'll need to hold a public hearing for the rezoning.
Okay, perfect. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Does that constitute any required public comment as well?
Well, technically, the rezoning is a public hearing.
Neighborhood?
No, this is not a neighborhood issue, but both the rezoning and the variance require notification. But it may be practical just to have a public hearing at this point, just on the rezoning, and then open up a separate public hearing once you start discussing variances.
Perfect. I like it. So this public hearing is related to things going for zoning, not the setbacks, not the lot sizes, nothing of that matter, just the zoning of that extra land being recoded as a mobile home. Yes, please state your name, sir.
Ken Green, and I live on 1713 Teakwood, so I'm in the park. I had a couple items dealing with that. The first, the first item is that, based on the application that we have, the information that's been presented is invalid. The owner is not listed correctly, and the addresses for the ownership is not listed. The official ownership is Gingerwood Manufactured Home Park LLC, 1734 East Boston Street, Gilbert, Arizona. Not, not the address and so forth on Gingerwood that was provided. The address provided is not even in the post office register, 1300. You can't send a certified letter to because it's not even a real address. So I question why we're going through everything if we don't even have the owner involved. But the second item I had specifically to the zoning is that the lot that we're talking about or had been looking at for the six new lots, those, that lot is presently on a senior housing zoned area. That area, that whole area from the park down is SH for senior housing. And we, the current, the rest of the park is not SH, and the idea that we would declassify a senior park down to a general standard zone is, I think, wrong. The, if we're going to make the whole park one zone, it should be SH. So it is a senior home. All the, all the paper and documentation we have from the owners and everything else says that it's a senior park. We bought the home as a senior park, and it should be zoned as a senior park. So that was my point on zoning.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard regarding zoning on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing there. I'll bring it around for any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, I can address the items that were brought up.
Typically unconventional, but given our audience this evening, I think it would be appropriate. So please, Susan.
Yes. The agenda lists the address of 1300 Gingerwood Street, although it is not a mailing address. It is the, it is, it, I'm not sure what the post office considers. I know the mail goes to the clubhouse, but the site is addressed as 1300 Ginger Street, and that's the way it is addressed on the tax rolls, and that's the way the city has always addressed that property, as it is one property. And the applicant is correct, the owner of the property, as listed on the application, which is on page 18 of the packet, the owner is Gingerwood Manufactured Home Park LLC, and their mailing address is in Gilbert, Arizona. The purpose of the agenda title is just as a summary for the convenience of the public, so they can understand, you know, where this is being located. David McMillan is one of the parties that is Gingerwood Manufactured Home Park LLC. He and, I believe, John McMillan are the other partner, and the two names before that, Mr. Cole and Mr. Devera, excuse me, Ms. Devera, are with the consulting company acting on their behalf. The next comment was addressed was with regard to the zoning itself. This property is not currently zoned SH, senior housing zone. As I mentioned before, the only aspect of the rezoning request is a triangle, sort of an island, really, of leftover study zoning. All of the land to the south, that is city-owned, and the city, in more recent years, about 10 years ago, created a new senior housing zone. It's subject to an entirely different chapter of the ordinance, very different standards than the mobile home park zone, and the mobile home parks wouldn't conform to the senior housing zone. You know, any member of the audience is welcome to look up those codes, but it would be quite a difficult and unnecessary process in order for the owner to try to rezone an entire park to a zoning district that was not created, you know, for what is already there. Although the current park doesn't conform to the current mobile home park standard, it is the proper zoning for mobile homes where all the rents, the lot, excuse me, where all the lots are rented. That's the purpose of that zone. And I believe that addresses those comments.
Perfect. And I'll reiterate a third time for point of clarification. That little triangle area at the bottom there, it is not currently SH, senior housing. It's study.
Correct.
So we're going to mobile home to make it conform. Wonderful. Discussion around the dais. I hear see no discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1177.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First motion carries. Okay. Susan, let's circle back around and reiterate what we're doing here for B.
For B, the variance request is specific to four items, that the lot area for the proposed lots does not meet current code standards, but as noted, all of the proposed lots are in conformance with all of the existing lots in Gingerwood, and in fact, they're, on average, a bit larger than the existing lots in Gingerwood.
Susan, not to interrupt, but I think there's stuff in our packet that would be beneficial to the audience as to why that zoning would not conform today, but was conforming at that time, and what has changed and what transpired.
Exactly, are you wanting history of zone changes?
Well, in that, we talked ownership versus leasing and having the discrimination between the two and finding that we needed to standardize that.
Yeah, there, there's more differences than that, but the most recent change in our code was because state law does not allow mobile home parks where the lots are rented to have different lot size standards than parks where the lots are owned. So for right now, our mobile home park zone and our mobile home estate zone, those, the current standards are for 6,000 square foot lots at 60 feet in width. However, back in the '70s, when pretty much all of our current mobile home parks, other than Lake Mead View Estates up in Emmanway Valley, all of the other parks were created in generally the '60s and '70s, and at that time, the zoning requirements were for much smaller lots. And, I'm sorry, no, I've got the history, and I believe the lot requirement was only in the 2,500 square foot size range. Oh, excuse me, 2,400 square feet was the original lot size requirement when Gingerwood was built. And the current proposed lot sizes will be between 3,900 square feet to just over 5,000 square feet. And for, let's see. Yeah, and the typical lot in the park is about 3,600 square feet. So again, the new lots will be at least as large and larger than the typical lot in Gingerwood. And the same thing goes for the width. And then the other two aspects, as noted, were with regard to the landscape area outside the wall and the extension of the wall versus chain link fencing around other boundaries.
Perfect. Thank you. My first question to kick us off here would be the legality of it. If due to NRS, we had to standardize the requirements, would we retroactively or going back and grandfathering someone in put us in a legal bind, because we've now been told that we cannot discriminate on those two things? And we can't say that everything's always grandfathered in. We don't have laws from 1312 that still apply. We have to progress with that. So do we open ourselves up to litigation if we don't comply to NRS and hope that we're just grandfathering in? Do we have any legal insight on that?
I would say, I mean, frankly, approval or denial of the request would not have an input packed with regard to state law. Our current code is inconformant simply because the standards between the, we made sure that the standards between the MP zone and the ME zone are the same. If you choose to deny the variance and require 6,000 square foot lots, it means you'd simply be requiring the new lots to be, obviously, much larger in size than what exists in Gingerwood currently, but that won't put you in trouble with NRS.
Okay, perfect. Questions? Okay. We'll ask the applicant to come forward and speak just relating to these four items. We've got lot size, lot width, the landscaping outside, and the wall and chain link variances.
Good evening. Sergio Comparan, again. And again, Susan had done such a good job with explaining everything, but I could reiterate if that's what you like.
You don't have to. This is just an opportunity, if you've got anything extra to present at this time related to those four variances, but it was an actual, very detailed packet, and Susan's done a wonderful job.
Right, yeah, there is, there is nothing else that I can add to it.
Okay, wonderful. We'll open up questions up here on the dais for any, for the applicant regarding these four topics in this issue. No? Wonderful. Excellent. We've got no questions for you? Thank you. This item is a public hearing as well for the application for the variances. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing portion for this related to the variances, I'll reiterate again, for the lot size, lot width, the landscape outside, and the wall and chain link material around the perimeter. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Bring it around to the dais for discussion. I'll, if we've got discussion?
I have, I just, I just wanted to make a comment, I think, basically, on this one, is that Gingerwood offers affordable housing to seniors, and so I think it's really important, and expanding the lot sizes would mean that they couldn't put as many properties in there. So I really feel that going with the smaller lot sizes is beneficial to seniors that do need affordable housing. So I'm for the smaller lot sizes.
And, I mean, I guess, a couple of my points that I had is, my house was built in 1978, but if I was to go and apply for a carport today, I have to abide by today's codes and standards. Same thing, we had lot sizes that were 3,000, 4,000 square feet downtown. We don't offer that as an option with inside Boulder City. Times do change. Codes are updated for a reason. You know, I think we open ourselves up legally. I know enough about law to get myself in trouble, but when the NRS comes down and says you can't discriminate, the reality is, is our mobile estate zone is set one way, and the state... the state innovator says do not discriminate. We don't grandfather people into discriminating on anything else. That's my takeaway. So I hope that that sparks some conversation up here as well.
I don't think lot size has anything to do with discrimination, at least as I understand it. Maybe Nate could shed something on that, but I don't determine that to be discrimination. I just think it's making affordable housing for people, so Nate?
I think Susan said something that as long as our mobile home estates and our mobile home park lot sizes were the same, I think that was what we're getting at, that we weren't discriminating on those two different zonings. Is that right?
Yes, I think maybe what may help clarify the issue is that what NRS addresses is that our code requirements cannot have different lot sizes for parks where lots are rented versus parks where lots are sold. I think the relevant comparison here is if a park like Gingerwood in the MP zone wants to expand, and a park like the one across the street...
Red Mountain.
Thank you. Maybe it's called a Red Mountain, I can't remember the exact name, but the other parks in town where the lots are owned, if any of them wanted to expand, they could also ask for similar variances to match the lot sizes they already have. That's the relevant comparison here. If you would approve a variance for Gingerwood to match their existing lot sizes, then if the park across the street or elsewhere had vacant land, not that any of them do as I recall, but if they did and they wanted to add lots of a similar size, they would also need a variance, because for the most part, their lots don't necessarily conform to current code requirements. So I hope that helps to clarify the issue, that you would not be violating state law.
And it clarifies that issue. My discrepancy is, is if I want to expand my personal residence, I have to conform to current code. I can't defect back to 1978 code. Mark Palm won't pass off on my expansion. So we're expanding a park and land, and we're just not going to conform to current code, because if we're going to skin that cat, we've got a whole lot of businesses and a whole lot of commercial buildings that are operating but non-conforming. Same thing, they could operate non-conform.
Right, but that's one of the aspects of a variance request is in terms of criteria A, that there be exceptional and extraordinary circumstances or conditions that don't apply generally, you know, elsewhere. More importantly, item B, that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property already possessed by property in the same vicinity. What NRS is talking about is how we establish our zoning requirements.
Correct, and I'm over the NRS.
Right, and it doesn't prohibit a community, you know, from granting variances that also conform to the provisions of NRS for the granting of variances. But you're right, whether or not the commission chooses to grant a variance just because, you know, existing lots are smaller or for other standards, is entirely up to the commission's discretion.
Fritz, may I offer my thoughts on the matter?
Yes, please, absolutely.
I would say I agree with you in the sense of if we're talking about an individual residential lot, I think what makes it a little bit easier for me to look at this variance request and consider approval is that we're looking at a park here where there are numerous lots that conform to the older standard, and so he's looking simply for parity with those lots. And that's how I'm viewing this. And that's where I feel I can get kind of over the hump of...as to whether or not we are going against what our current code says. Clearly we are, or would be, but I can feel comfortable with the sense that we're really just essentially continuing the park as previously developed and as it currently exists.
That was what I was going to say.
Yeah, I was just going to second.
And I truly understand that, but every time, if you take a step back and strategically look, every time you update a code, then essentially everything is automatically grandfathered in for the future, because at every given time when we update a code, things are going to be out of code. I mean, I'll be transparent and say right now, I'm in favor for this. I'm just playing devil's advocate and sparking conversation. I think that's our due diligence that we have to do up here.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
How long have they owned the property there at the location B?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How long have they owned the property?
Oh, that has been part of the park boundaries since it was sold in the 1960s.
Okay, thank you.
But is there a new owner?
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a...
Wait, one second, please. I just wanted to make the comment that the...in this variance request, in their variance justification letter on page 32 of the packet, item one, I had a question about, I drove through the park and around it, and the six-foot-high masonry wall should be constructed and maintained around the property. Without reading this upfront, I did a site visit first, and I thought that we should have a masonry wall going all the way around. But in here, they said that there's existing site conditions prohibiting construction of a masonry wall, that they have an existing sewer easement along both property lines I assume that's correct, and building a masonry wall is impossible? Question mark?
Actually, I don't know if it's impossible, but they are correct, that there is an easement in that area. I apologize, I did not ask Public Works whether or not a wall would have actually been prohibited. And to be honest, the response from, I haven't received the response from Public Works yet regarding this proposal, but I know they have seen it at an earlier project review meeting and did not have any significant concerns or problems with the development.
May I ask one more question, Chairman? May I ask a question of staff? I guess, is that allowed at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, kind of building on that question, I think we're contemplating allowing a chain link fence by virtue of the fact that the adjoining property is open or public land at this point. If that, in the future, if that parcel of land is developed by a private owner or by the city, would a block wall be required at that time?
Well, the abutting land is in our senior housing zone, and I regret that I did not bring my full code book with me. So I do, oh, good man, if somebody wouldn't mind bringing that over. He's more prepared than I am. Someone's working on becoming champion.
Hello?
Okay.
To get A+ for being prepared.
I know, I tell ya. I know, it was a lot of reading. Okay, chapter 37 is the SH Senior Housing Zone.
And why Susan's saying that, can I say something? And I thought about the block wall fence too, that they should have put it all the way around, but when you look at that park, it's had a chain link fence along there forever and ever. So why make somebody go to that expense? Because again, this is senior housing that's affordable for our seniors, so I'm more for...yeah.
And I have an answer to your question. Actually, the code states that perimeter walls are not required in the SH housing zone. It said, it states, although perimeter walls are not required, any wall surrounding the development shall be of decorative masonry or stucco materials, meaning it's not required, but if a developer wants to put up fencing or a wall, that it does have to be decorative masonry or stucco. But it is not a requirement that they provide a boundary wall.
Okay, thank you. So the point of me asking the question was, is by allowing them to build a chain link fence today, we're not simply pushing off into the future a needed wall.
A burden to another property owner.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve variance V19641 and staff findings.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, number C, Susan, just recap where we're at on C.
Item C is for the site plan approval. And essentially, now that you have recommended approval of the rezoning and approved variances, as the code states, you're basically supposed to review the plan in accordance with the code requirements to determine compliance. And as I noted, there's a two-page analysis attached to the report that goes over all of the code requirements of that chapter, and everything, you know, is technically in compliance now, because it either complied based on how they proposed it, and the items that required a variance now comply, given that the variance was granted. Again, if you, you're certainly welcome to ask more questions or discuss this further, but if you choose to approve the site plan per the code, Resolution Number 1178 would accomplish that with all of the conditions that are listed in the resolution.
Okay, any questions of staff on this?
I don't have a question, but I just got another comment that, again, we have another community that has way too much RV parking for that area. I went over there, and they have tons of empty boat and RV parking spaces over there on the west side. I don't know if people are out RVing, but it seems like our RV parking requirements are still excessive.
Just for clarification, when you say we have another community, you're referring to this community? Okay, thank you.
And you want them to have more RV parking?
No, no, no. They have a lot of RV parking there.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with the background.
Okay, well, ask the applicant to come forward if you've got anything else to add on this site map or anything like that. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Wonderful. Bring it around on this one. It does not look that we have a public hearing requirement.
No, but it's not a requirement.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up if anybody wishing to speak on the site map, site map requirements alone. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Thank you, Ken Green again. The only question I have on the site map was, and the picture that I thought we looked at before on the site map had the street extending through the new lot going into the SH area. And so are we saying we're approving the street to go through into the SH area from Gingerwood, which is what, that's what shows on the map?
Actually, the street stops a few feet short of the property line, so it will not go to the property line.
Because we talked about the square footage per lot, there's a lot more space there that's just lost for that supposedly street there. That's my comment.
Wonderful, thank you. And folks, we're going to ask that you guys please keep it down out there in the audience. Okay, bring it around, any conversation, anything. We'll entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff conditions.
Approval of 1178?
Mm-hmm. I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Delta.
And this is the allotment request, and now that you have found in favor of items A, B, and C, the appropriate action is simply to forward this request to the allotment committee for review and rating.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if there's no discussion, no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to forward this to the allotment committee as written.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And for reference of the audience, as their public hearing notices stated, the rezoning request and the allotment request will move forward to the city council after the allotment request goes to the allotment committee.
Let me just get caught up here. What page are we on? Okay, agenda item number three for possible action, city of Boulder City, additional conservation area, El Dorado Valley. Susan, please.
There are two items under here, but they're related but quite different. Item A is a proposed text amendment to the master plan, as noted, to chapter four, the land use chapter, to add references to the open lands-conservation category and the manufacturing- energy category. And with the chairman's permission, I'll just address this issue first, because it's not necessary to explain both of these issues together. Item B will become clear once we've addressed item A. So you've got a copy of the draft changes in your code, and basically, as the staff report notes, pretty much ever since we acquired the El Dorado Valley and...
Hey, folks, can you please keep it down? We're trying to conduct a meeting.
Since we acquired the El Dorado Valley and had to add new zoning and master plan maps, as the commission is aware, that the uses within the El Dorado Valley are extremely limited. Pretty much the only uses are open space, you know, which also can be, much of that land is encumbered by what is colloquially referred to as the desert tortoise easement, now referred to as the Boulder City Conservation easement. And throughout the rest of the city, the open space land use category corresponds to our S study zone, but because that conservation easement imposes an extra restriction over lands, it made sense for the master plan map to have a separate designation for the area where that conservation easement is. So whereas the general land use category is open lands, and that applies to most of the open lands within all of the city limits, ever since we acquired the El Dorado Valley, we had treated that category a little differently. On the original map, it was labeled preserve. Well, since we digitized our maps, we've been referring to that easement area on the master plan as open lands-conservation to have that designation. But that was never listed within the master plan text, so the proposed amendment defines what that category means. And simply, it's that it's specifically for lands in the El Dorado Valley transfer area subject to the Clark County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, also known as the Boulder City Conservation easement. Likewise, for the renewable energy areas within the El Dorado Valley, the general master plan category is manufacturing, like it is for our manufacturing area in the rest of the city. However, obviously, we didn't want the public to assume that just any old kind of manufacturing could happen in the El Dorado Valley. So from the beginning, that particular area was labeled separately with an energy designation. And since we digitized the maps, we've been labeling that area as, you know, man-e, manufacturing- energy. But again, that was never defined in the master plan. So this proposed little cleanup amendment defines that category as being specifically for renewable and other energy uses on land owned by or leased on behalf of the city. And as you'll see for another action later tonight, we've got some solar areas that are within what we call the original townsite area. So this is just not particular to the El Dorado Valley area, but basically, it's particular to wherever we've just got city-owned land that we are just leasing for energy purposes. And then there's another minor cleanup item in here, mentioned just simply adding abbreviations to the text. There's also a reference to lot sizes in the low-density residential category, that proposal to change... that referen- that proposal to change the bottom limit from seven thousand to five thousand to match zoning changes that have already been made to allow, um, the, the new district that would allow five thousand square foot lots, as well as to reflect the fact that most of our historic townsite is five thousand square foot lots. But that doesn't mean that that area is, should be considered medium-density residential. It's still low-density residential, and the master plan, um, is proposed to be updated just in the couple spots, you know, to make that clear. And then I believe the only other change is in one of the tables to add the reference to, um, energy production into the category of manufacturing. So very simple cleanup matters to address very specific items.
Beautiful. And can we do this in one foul swoop? Can we approve both of them at once, or do we need to take them individually?
I would say take them individually, 'cause all I've explained right now is just item A.
Beautiful. Any questions for staff on?
But, um, excuse me, if we, if you do wanna handle them separately, you would need to do two public hearings, so if you would prefer me to go ahead and, um, explain item B now and then hold one public hearing, that's your choice. Okay. Item B, related to this, um, the commission may remember that some, earlier this year, we had an amendment, um, to the master plan and zoning in the El Dorado Valley with regard to, um, what we were calling Copper Mountain Five lease area. And actually, um, I have to point out that we just discovered today that we've got, um, a small error on your exhibit map, so I need to mention for the record, 'cause it's important with regard to how master plan amendments move forward to the city council. But on your exhibit map, thank you, um, for this area, the map is correct for showing the subject area for the change. This north-west corner of this map here, relative to what we did earlier this year, if you'll recall, we expanded land for the Copper Mountain Five project, which would be at the bottom of this map where it's labeled ME. And we actually took that land out of the conservation easement. But as you'll recall, we were able to do that because we worked with the county over many months to basically swap that conservation land for the area that is the subject of this request. So this area previously was not conservation area, but now that we've already approved the agreement with the county, making it conservation area, we just need to update the master plan map accordingly. Um, so that's the subject of item B, but for the record, the map that will go to the city council, the only thing that's different on this is that that area at the map that, on the bottom part that is currently labeled MAN-E, um, we just noticed today, it doesn't include the Copper Five amendment that, um, was acted on a few months ago. So that correction will go forward to council. It's not changing the action, it's just that another part of the map wasn't up to date for that, so we will make sure that your official map that goes forward to city council has that correction. And with that, that covers A and B, and if you've, um, after you deal with any questions, you are welcome to open up the public hearing.
Do we have any questions?
I have one. Susan, so A and B would be resolution eleven seventy-nine?
And eighty. Excuse me, um, A is, yes, resolution eleven seventy-nine, which is a text amendment to add those categories and the other couple minor cleanup items. Item B is for this particular map amendment, um, to add that conservation designation over that corner that we swapped, um, relative to that Copper Mountain Five request earlier this year.
And for clarification, I don't know if this matters, but we keep referencing item A, item B, but it's not, 'cause we've got agenda item, actual A is the neighborhood meeting.
Oh, I'm so terribly sorry.
Yeah, 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 just for point of clarification.
Thank you very much, you're right. Item C is the master plan amendment, text amendment, and item D is the map amendment. Thank you. We will make sure that it's just all correct in the minutes.
Okay, so questions?
And for the record, I will state that my explanation of every, of everything constituted the neighborhood meeting per agenda item A.
Beautiful. So the neighborhood has been explained to. We will do the public hearing at the end. Of any questions that we have for staff up here for both items to expedite. So any questions of staff regarding item C or D, number eleven seventy-nine, eleven eighty? Yes, Ernie?
Yes, and it's, I almost hate to even just bring it up, 'cause this is a very straightforward, it's, it's well-done. Um, and it, and you actually have, and it concerns the issue of neighborhood meeting and the requirements that are there. We've met them. I, I clearly understand, we provide the notices, we've done it in the paper and everything. But one of the things that kinda struck me, and I, I wasn't sure if, uh, if it was something that should be given consideration in the future, but when you have only seven neighbors that were probably notified on the master plan amendment, um, because they're the closest things to the area out there, which is, I get that. But most of the, and even the signage would have been on the properties out there, I believe, if I understand it. The only real notification then seems to be the newspaper. And I, it's just kinda, I guess maybe again, it's a comment more than anything, would we, in the future, consider perhaps a different, additional notification when you have something like a master plan that's in an area way away from the city? I, I, it just, there's a disconnect in my thinking in terms of what I call, um, notifying, notifying people of what's being done. I'd hate to think that people think we're just doing something and not letting them know, you know? That's my comment.
I think it's a comment well-taken, communication versus just checking the block. So, uh, any other questions for staff? Anything else that we've got? Yes, please.
I think this has been well-stated, but I just wanna make absolutely sure. Um, so our action here tonight is, or, you know, as we go through and let you say, we approve this, um, items C and D, what we're simply doing is cleaning up or making, you know, I would say bringing, um, and maybe I'm using the wrong terminology, but code, zoning, um, master plan, kind of into a more consistent language and, uh, designations on the maps. Is that pretty much it? Or just kinda getting everything consistent?
Yeah, effectively, both items are really, you could say, conformity or cleanup matters. You know, item C for the text amendment is basically just to reflect, you know, existing conditions, what we've been doing. We've, we've been referring to the conservation easement as a separate designation on the map, and the same thing with the energy designation, it's just a cleanup to put it in the text so that it's clearly explained. Um, and as I mentioned, the other items are just cleanup to reflect existing, you know, zoning requirements, et cetera. And item B, the master plan map amendment, is just to reflect prior action already taken by the city and county to put that particular land area within the conservation easement. We are just now cleaning up the map to do that, and in fact, when we brought the Copper Mountain Five and that swap request to you earlier this year, I stated in the staff report, "Oh, by the way, we will be following up with a subsequent map amendment to the master plan for that area." This is us following up on that.
Very good. And so, no real concrete action that would have an impact in the sense of expanding or changing any?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation to, uh, approve eleven seventy-nine and...
I'm sorry, I do, we, I do have to hold a public hearing. I do apologize.
I'm sorry.
Uh, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to the public hearing for both resolution number one-one-seven-nine and resolution number one-one-eight-zero. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and I believe we may have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to make a recommendation to the city council to approve eleven seventy-nine and eleven eighty.
Second?
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number four for possible action, City of Boulder City, additional energy resource zone area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just get to the right part of the packet. Okay, this particular item, and Holly, could you go back to maps? Or the exhibits? Thank you, we want, um, yes. Um, we have a, two related requests, a master plan and a zoning map amendment for what in your packet was called the Skylar Townsite Southwest rezoning area, but as you see, you've got slightly corrected maps before you that just take the word Skylar out of the title. And I apologize for not having the same mapping equipment as the person who created the maps, but, um, I will note for the record, there will be one more correction that will go to the city council. The legend still refers to Skylar and that will need to be corrected. But in any case, as the staff report notes, that, um, the city currently has an option agreement to lease, um, over a thousand acres, and our consultant, the Yonis, can, can tell me if it's, is Skylar still the name that we're dealing with?
Townsite.
Okay. Apparently, the name has been changed, and Skylar's no longer to be used, but the option agreement is still in place with the city. It's just that, um, believe me, with these solar projects, the, the names change all the time and it can get very confusing. But in any case, there's an existing law, option agreement for the expansion of, um, the proposed solar energy area. And as you can see from the maps in the packet, the, um, we rezoned several years ago, I think it was back in two thousand twelve or so, over nine hundred acres east of US ninety-five for solar energy purposes. And basically, the lease ended up becoming larger, and so now the, um, master plan and zoning maps just need to be updated for that expanded lease area that is already optioned for the additional approximate, um, a hundred and forty-three acres west of US ninety-five. So, um, there weren't any other uses proposed for that land. You know, as the report notes, the master plan designation was, um, previously just open lands, and the zoning designations were government open space and S study. And the proposed master plan will now be manufacturing-energy, and the proposed zoning will be our ER energy resource zone. But again, this is just a follow-up on actions already taken by the city council with regard to the existing option areas for this project. But since it does involve a master plan, I, my explanation constitutes the neighborhood meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, and just for point of clarification, this zoning is required to exercise the option on the contract, and we'd be violation of contract if we didn't do it.
Yes.
Beautiful. Any questions of staff? Yes.
So I'm gonna ask the same question, even though I think it's been adequately stated. So, the action really of expanding the lease has been taken by city council. We're simply, in essence, cleaning up, if you will, and getting the zoning correct so that, um, the full contract can be implemented.
That's what I've been told. We do have, um, a consultant here on behalf of the solar companies, and she might be able to provide more information regarding that.
That's your cue.
All right, ma, my name is Linda Bullen, B-U-L-L-E-N, for the record, and I'm an energy and environmental attorney from Las Vegas, and as indicated, I do represent the applicant here. And, uh, yes, in fact, what you stated is basically correct, um, that it is part of the contract with the city that will allow for expansion. It, it was originally nine hundred and two, nine hundred and three acres. We added a hundred and thirty-three or thereabouts, um, and, and it is that area that is not yet zoned properly for, it needs this, this zoning change in order to comport with the contract that we have with the city that will allow us to lease that portion of the land.
All right, so, uh, but, so, so in other words, that action has been taken?
Yes, yes. The, the, the lease, it's, it's currently an option form, but it has been approved by the city council.
Perfect, I appreciate that, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing for resolution one-one-eight-one and one-one-eight-two. Anyone wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Bring it around to the dais for any discussion or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to recommend to city council to approve eleven eighty-one and eleven eighty-two.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five on the agenda, monthly progress report. Item number six was already taken care of. Item number seven, finally, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during the final public comment period? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the final public comment. Meeting adjourned.
I told my husband, as long as it took me to read this, we'll probably be here until midnight.